We're recording?
Yes.
Okay. But I'd like to make a motion to open this meeting. HPP.
Motion.
Okay.
Okay, member Searle?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Aye.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Before we start, does anybody need to recuse themselves for any reason regarding the matters in question?
No.
No? Okay. None? None?
None.
Okay, good.
No.
You said? Okay. Very good. And also keep in mind, we have a lot of meeting minutes to go through later on, but that's later. Right now, in front of us is five Austin Park. The applicant, is that applicant here?
No, Mr. Morbidot's not here yet.
Let's move on. Put it at the end. Yeah, yes, just label that for the moment. Let's go to number two, which would be for Courtney Circle. Forty-one, I'm sorry. Forty-one? Yep. Yep. Okay. So is your parents ever in that house?
Yes, they're still there. We haven't moved them in. So last year, we were here because they had a railing and a roof put on their house. And we were approved for a railing, but we never heard anything from the roof. So we just kept on living. And my brother suddenly passed away this past February.
Sorry to hear that.
Thank you. And so my parents are in their mid-eighties. My dad's blind deaf. My mom has asthema. And so we had to move them from that house.
Right.
We're in the process now of getting it ready to sell and put it on the market, hoping to be on it this week, early next week. So we have a deposit and an application effort for back to some. We're just waiting for it to, you know, get open for them and move them in. But still, we have heard nothing from the house. We had about the roof, we need to put it on the market. And if we divulge an information that it wasn't, I don't know if it was approved, was not approved, but if we can, you know, have some sort of, if we divulge an information where the new owners buy it and then they're made to remove it, it's going to really be, you know, a detriment to the sale of that house and something my parents really can't go through. They don't have the money, they don't have the knowledge, they don't have the time.
Yeah.
You know, it's, so we're just...
Totally understandable. That part is totally understandable.
Yeah.
So we're just asking like for, you know, approval or whatever, so we can just move on.
Right. I think what we will do and what is in front of us is an approval for standing seam roof. And we'll, you know, consider that, weigh that. But I think there's some other things after that that we can discuss here briefly with you, so that we'll let you know about it. Because it's a tough situation and it happened before, you know, it was not approved. So we'll...
And, I'm sorry, but we, we lived like two minutes around and we didn't, when they moved in, they didn't realize that there was a difference between the town and the village. My wife and I just had, we live on Breckenbury, so back near the road, we just had like a half a million dollars of improvements made to our house.
No.
We didn't need a permit, you know, or anything. And then they, you know, so we thought, and being so close, you know, and we didn't really realize either they were in the village.
Right.
And I guess before it was done, you know, so it's...
Okay, understand. It's tough.
Now, members, comments?
Just as a question, maybe for the board and maybe for Jeff too, but this had happened before Chris and I, at least last year, were on this board. So my understanding was some sort of like a hold harmless agreement with the village, correct? And then also something along the lines of, I'm not going to, I don't want to use the word approval, but you can leave it, but never replace it to those products. So this maybe, I'm just trying to get brought up to speed on really where this application is.
Steve is probably the guy to speak to this, but...
I have, I, if that is...
If I could ask the question, that'd be great. There isn't, there was not anything like the latter thing that should suggest that it could stay on there as long as they didn't replace it with that. There was nothing like that.
Okay.
I believe there was a whole harmless agreement where Steve did not stop the construction when he could have, because they didn't really have a permit for it. But they, the owner agreed to hold the roof harmless for any damages that would arise from the continued work. So that's what I know about the roof situation.
Okay.
Other than that, it's not approved. The rules at this point, the application here is for approval.
So the whole harmless agreement was related specifically to the conduct of the work that was underway?
Continued work.
Continued work underway. Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
About that time, because this was a question and it wasn't our first question about modern sheet metal roofing being installed to replace shingle roofing, I made an inquiry to the State Historic Preservation Office and there's my inquiry as well as the response to that inquiry. I asked whether or not...
Do you want to read it off the question?
Sure, I'm happy to read it.
Thank you.
This is my email to Robin Sedgwick at the State Historic Preservation Office. The State Historic Preservation Office is the state equivalent, if you will, of this board.
They're actually our overseeing organization.
Overseen, yes, their overseeing body.
Provide guidance to us.
Yeah. So this is what I wrote. This is Virginia Searle, it's me, former partner at Bureau Architecture and current member of the Village of Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board. I wonder if the SHPO has approved modern sheet metal roofing as replacement roofing on state-funded rehabilitation projects. If so, what was the existing or original roofing to be replaced? Let me digress for just a moment. New York State, through consolidated funding, the consolidated funding application does fund construction projects and any work that is funded by the state directly or funded publicly has to be reviewed and approved by the state of New York. This was Ms. Sedgwick's response. Thank you for your email. Please note, every project is different and every review is different. All my approvals are on a case-by-case basis, same as we do here. Generally, if a building did not have a metal roof historically, we do not recommend installing a metal roof. If the building had a metal roof historically and that can be proven, we will approve a metal roof, provided it matches the appearance of the historic. If the building currently has a metal roof and they are replacing in kind, we would encourage them to return the roof to its original appearance, if known and assuming it isn't metal. Otherwise, we would, otherwise, we would approve the in-kind metal roofing, metal for metal.
In-kind, yeah.
And I would also state that historic sheet metal roofing is similar in some ways and different in many ways from modern sheet metal roofing. Height of the ribs, thickness of the ribs, details at eaves, rake edges, roof ridges, those kinds of things are quite easily, visibly different because of the nature of modern sheet metal roofing. Modern sheet metal roofing is steel, it's very heavy, it's not very easily manipulated, it's not pliable. Typically, historic metal roofing would have been copper, either lead-coated copper or bright copper. It might have been turn metal, which is in fact a steel, but it's much thinner and it has been coated with paint.
Question here.
I need to clarify a question. What is your definition of historic? The house of this 1963 ranch with, you know, a huge like power lines in the back. What is, I don't know what your definition of historic means.
Well, in, in the village, you are, you are here because the village is an historic district. I agree. Your house is a post-war modern house. I understand that. But in fact, it did have asphalt shingle roofing on it. So I just wanted to let the board know that I had some input from SHPO.
Really valuable to hear that.
Is there a way we can get the applicant a copy of that?
Can make a copy of it right this morning.
And then a copy for the record.
Yeah. So in other words, the bottom line is that they would not recommend standing. Yeah.
They would, they would not.
Yeah.
But if they review it on a case-by-case basis and they know the situation at hand, would they make any kind of exceptions?
I can address that. The, when you apply a zoning, and this is a zoning or code restriction, it is applicant blind, if you will. It's the needs of the property, not the needs of the applicant. Get into the needs and abilities of the applicant, but it's still related, have a lease of the property by doing a hardship application, depending on what this board decides to do. But, you know, ignore the needs of the owner in this case. We just look at the property to decide what is best for the property, what is right in the property and the surrounding room and the village.
Any other questions here?
I guess, so the biggest thing I'm ignorant to is like, so basically, is the standing from a legal perspective such that if the home were to change hands, since that does not have a CO, that that would have to be readdressed for the buyer?
Right, yeah, I mean, and if the buyer got a mortgage and the mortgage company asked for certification, there was no outstanding violations, the builders would not be able to give that certification.
I mean, to be honest, my parents have no money to put on a new roof or change your roof. I don't know what we, I mean, it would, you know, affect the sale of the house, it would affect, you know, I don't know if you want that in the village, you know, and I just, I don't know.
The board hasn't decided. But there are, there...
Could you explore some of the other, could you discuss some of the other actions that might be available to, to a homeowner?
First of all, there would be a hardship application, the vote, if the board denied your application. There would be a hardship application.
And that is, sorry, and a hardship application is?
You come to the board, say you have a hardship with, this property has a hardship with this requirement or the, or the non-approval of a roof. Secondly, in the past, the board of trustees, it would not be this board, has granted a restrictive covenant that would require the roof to be changed out in X number of years so that...
But at the cost of the new owner?
At the cost of whomever changes, if that's correct.
And, and also...
But I, you know, first of all, I want to make very clear that I'm, I'm the attorney and I don't have any authority to say it when they were doing this case. I mean, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just talking about past circumstances.
I almost thought I had this solved for you because someone contacted me and said, "I really want to buy a ranch in the village." And I said, "You've got to really look at Courtney Circle," you know. And then they came back and said, "We're really interested, but we noticed there are power lines, as you mentioned there." So, you know, I thought I had it solved.
Well, that's what, when my, when my parents luckily took it, I mean, it was on the market for, you know, almost 200 days because of that, it kept on flying through because of the power lines.
Yeah.
But it's going to be like the right kind of, you know, buyer at the time.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
But I, we are, you need to get them out.
Yeah.
Jeff, could you clarify? I, it was my understanding in the past with old ordinances that are not in place now, that the trustees were the ones who voted on hardship application.
No, this is, this is what I...
So this board invoked.
That's embedded in our...
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought, but from what you just said, it sounded like maybe what I was wrong.
Those two different things, I was saying about hardship and then the option of perhaps a covenant running with your property that would require a removal within X number of years, whatever that would be. So, I mean, those are the two, only two options I have.
What would the process be for the covenant?
Sorry?
What would the process be for the covenant?
Trustees would have to agree to a settlement and then there would be a restrictive covenant filed in the Rock County Clerk's office, setting forth the terms of what that agreement is.
Something like, you know, the roof would be replaced within, you know, five years or maybe seven years.
But they would have to be up to the new owners to say that, not my parents, correct?
No, it would be the buyer would have to replace it.
But understand that it will be a restrictive covenant against the property which will be found when they reiterate the abstract.
Yeah.
So they will have no, everybody will have notice of it.
Any other questions?
I don't, the vote of the board isn't voted yet, so we're talking, everything we're talking about is speculative.
Right. So they can approve it and then...
It's up to the board.
So does the board of trustees base that on?
This board, just for a second question.
Yeah.
This board has to apply the standards required of it in the Historic Preservation Code in reaching a decision. It's, it's one of the benefits of being in historic.
Any other questions?
I have one more question for Jeff. Is there a timeframe between a possible denial of the existing application and a review for hardship?
I don't know.
Okay.
Good question. Very good.
I don't think there is, but I'll tell you in two minutes.
If I may, I'd like to offer my opinion at this point. No one objects.
Sure.
I don't feel that I personally can vote to approve the roof, the metal roofing as it is. I would definitely approve a hardship.
Well, now, can I, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, tell us what's needed. Documentation is to be provided.
This is a two-step process, but you're going to have to follow the requirements of the hardship and they are stringent and they're tough and they're, I mean, it's a very difficult test to meet.
Can you?
No.
Can you give us some information on what that is?
Yeah, you can, well, yeah, I can. It would require, I've never, this board has never done...
It's mine as well.
That's what I've been told too. In all of my, how long I've been almost probably 30 years of representing this board, there's never been, you know, one hardship application. There was one, but that was under a different code. So this is all about appraisals, market value, and it doesn't fit particular rate of return, it doesn't fit particularly well to a residential piece of property. Now, you know, this is a Nikon model ordinance. So I, leave me out of the subject, you know, what do we do with a residential piece of property and I had her back. There is no time that I can discern over.
Well, I guess let me rephrase that. I don't feel that I can approve according to our ordinance, the sheet metal roofing, given the parameters. Having dealt with elderly parents myself and the financial issues that go along with needing care beyond being able to live in their own home. I've, I've been there and I've done that and I sympathize with you entirely.
I would support that.
To me, that seems like a reasonable hardship, but whether or not it meets the requirements of New York State law, I don't know.
Yeah, well, it's our law.
Okay. Our law is, the New York State Council of Mayors puts it forward.
So after we vote for this, then, is there a process that you would recommend that you connect with us?
Yes, Steve, Steve and I will work our way through this.
I'd like to make a comment.
Almost not representing, by the way, I'm just proceeding.
Almost like Virginia's, and I've used this example before in the Village of Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board HPP etiquette. Number nine, I always read it, it says, "Please remember applicants are interested in maintaining or improving their home or business in the village. The process of an approval should be relatively easy. Every consideration courtesy and kindness should be extended to them." Obviously, this is a very, very interesting case that's been brought to us over the last almost two years now. And as what, as what Virginia said, I am having a hard time of denying this application based on a case-by-case, based on a case-by-case presentation to us in the best interest of our village, in a post-war house, in the best case of our villagers and our residents too, of sending them away, I'm having a hard time of what would be denying this. And I understand where everybody's coming from. How far off is this roof really from a historically accurate metal roof? And is it, is there any, is there options for us to not send them down this path?
There would not have, there was not a metal roof on this house and it was built at a time and of an architectural style and in a neighborhood where a sheet metal roof would not have been seen at all.
Right.
And I'm, you're looking at board etiquette.
Correct.
And I am talking about what our ordinance requires of us. And I, I agree. We need to be polite, we need to be understanding, we need to do the best we can.
Case-by-case, fully.
But case-by-case doesn't mean that you ignore the requirements of the ordinance.
Jeff, if, if we were to request the covenants as you described, is that something we'd have to vote on or is that separate outside of our board?
So the way that rolls out is, again, we're speculating that we're getting a no vote. In the event that we got a no vote here, then the next step in all of this is the code enforcement department would, should, could enforce the fact that they had the roof and has not been approved. In the context of that enforcement, there could be some agreement between, and again, you got to understand, I have no authority to speak for the possibility of this. No ability even. But if it were to occur, to occur in the context of that enforcement proceeding with the board of trustees and the enforcement proceeding, saying, "Okay, we can figure it out this way." This is totally a board trustees action in the context of the enforcement proceeding.
Okay. Anything else? So I think step one is to take our vote on this application as it's submitted and since we have no other questions, I don't think we have any more. We have a motion to take a vote?
Excuse me. So is, are all the member, all the voting members here today?
No.
No.
We're short of, we're short a member tonight.
The alternate could not be here tonight.
So would we be able to come back and present to the whole board?
Absolutely.
That is, then you're right.
Absolutely have that right.
I apologize for not making that point.
Well, I was going to make it in about two seconds, but...
You have something to say?
Yes. The answer is absolutely entitled. I'm not going to get into the math, how that might affect the outcome, but certainly that member could have input that would sway or convince one of these other board members of his, his position or that the other member was here, her position. So yes, you are absolutely entitled to have the full board.
All right. Since we do have a form, we can vote on this.
Or we can table.
We can table.
If the applicant, we'd rather have the full board here.
Yeah.
I think I'd rather have the full board here.
Okay, absolutely.
Great.
All right. And we will make sure that this, as it stands, goes to that person so they have it to review it.
So should I?
Just to add, so you'll understand, I don't know if it makes any difference, but the applicant, I'm sorry, the alternate member, it will appear virtually with some help because of somebody, his health concern.
Oh, Ms. Evans isn't here too?
And I don't know what her status is. She was expecting not to be a member of this board.
Okay.
But she's a whole over member because of the appointment process at the board trustee level.
But she's not participating anymore?
She, I don't know. I'm not going to say that.
She is currently appointed to the board and her participation is completely up to her.
Okay.
And we have not heard from her one way or the other, okay?
So...
So we can postpone this for you, is that our...
Yeah, I really have.
We'll make sure that, yeah, we'll make sure that that person is here.
Should I? I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead, you go ahead.
Should I have anything prepared more for next month?
No.
Well...
These are the facts, maybe other things that...
I mean, you might present, if you have any, the board with any additional evidence from any other authoritative body like a Historic Preservation Board somewhere that has done something like this, with the reasons they have done it. I mean, I realize that requires a lot of research, but...
You're welcome to bring something.
Anything for the National, any, any of you find for the National Park Service.
Not just New York. It's not just New York, it could be National.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I mean, any authoritative body, whatever, you know, if there was, you know, if the Williamsburg or whatever they're called Association were to say something on this point, then we would, yeah, I mean, we would be certainly willing to, I mean, I say we, the board would consider any, any authoritative documentation.
Also, also locally, the, okay.
That's from...
No, okay. Locally, the Landmark Society too can weigh in on this and I can give you a contact there.
Thank you.
I've spoken with them on this as well, but you know, you can get clarification.
Sure.
Great.
So this goes to next month?
I think it will go to a month when we can show we have five board members here.
Should I call you?
We'll let you know.
Will you call me first or should I call you?
I would follow up with Steve.
Steve.
So June 12th is the next meeting.
The guy in the black, yeah, there we go.
So if you want to put that in your calendar.
June 12.
Yes.
Is there anything else that the applicant can do in preparation for next months?
No, I think, I just, well, first of all, have you looked at the code? Have you looked at our guiding document in terms of what this board is required to look at?
No.
I'll get with Steve and we'll send you, I'm not sending you the whole board, we'll let you with what we're looking at, make the decision. And if any of the board members have something from the design guidelines that you can be, not even of assistance, but pertinent.
Yeah, go to, go to section six of the, and it's on the, on the website for the Village Design Guidelines. It's page 69 on roofing.
Also look at the section on post-war houses.
Yeah.
So we...
And I'll put my contact down for Landmark on there too.
And those would be in the Design Guidelines, those for Design Guidelines. When you look for it online, that's what you need to look for.
And you said to look for National Places?
National, I would, you know...
National Park Service.
National Park Service, see if, if Williamsburg or any other historic area that you know of might have been out of publication, as they may be saying.
National Park Service has preservation briefs. There are probably 50 at this point and roofing would be one of them.
I have looked at the one on the metal roof and it's not particularly helpful to your situation. I mean, it's not adverse, it's just not... situation. I mean, it's not adverse, it's just not.
It's just primarily with historic.
Thank you.
Sheet metal roof.
Thank you, Penny.
Okay.
So, if you go to the historic preservation piece on the top of the website, that's where you'll find everything in the drop-down menu.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
We did make a motion to table it. Oh, boy. We do, we do.
Yeah.
I already made a motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, Member Searle, motion to table.
Aye.
Member Dubraski.
Aye.
Member Olson.
Yes.
Chair Pollock.
Yes.
Twenty-five Monroe Avenue.
Steve has a question. Steve?
I was going to tell you, I was, it is your, your title.
Oh.
Title and credit, I don't know which way you want to go. It's up to you.
I'm sorry, you said they were or not?
Were. You are here, okay. Why don't you come up then?
Well, thank you.
Okay, great.
Are you Jen?
No, I'm Jody.
Okay.
I work with Paul and you.
Okay.
So, I worked on the drawings.
Okay. I was just wondering about Jen Morrow, because there was a Jen Morrow who grew up on Sterling Street.
Oh, okay.
Who was a placemat of my size. I was wondering if it's the same name.
Okay.
So.
This is the addition.
Yes. So, we worked on adding the elements such as the trim on the left side elevation to create not a flat plane.
Yeah.
And we took off the gables above the.
Yeah.
Yep. And we.
Wait, what page, what are we looking at?
We're looking, oh, I'm talking about page two.
Okay.
And there were some gables on the front elevation on the windows.
Elevation?
Yeah.
So, yes, sorry.
And we took them off.
Okay.
And then on the left side elevation on that sheet, there is a vertical piece of trim to break up the wall to make it not look like one flat plane.
Okay, suggestion's well taken.
So, we also added that vertical piece on the right side elevation on page three. Page three, there's also a vertical piece of trim.
Page three.
Like.
It's here.
Well, all four, all four elevations are shown on page two. I just have a more, I just printed everything. That's where I came. I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. I get it. I think we're talking about the same thing.
Yes.
So, I'll start. I have a couple of questions. This is my first time seeing it, because I wasn't here last time. But on the proposed elevation page, you start with the rear elevation.
Yes.
One question that I have is for the overhang above the exit door of the garage. There should be some sort of, you should put something over that. This is a proposed rear elevation with different elevations than you.
Oh, I see what you mean now. I thought you, okay. All right.
Proposed rear elevation.
You just would like to see, just a little over that.
Real house, is that?
Absolutely. You did it on the addition on, on.
Would you like?
Wasn't that visible?
It's on the rear.
That will most likely be visible based on that street if you're having.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Would you like to see a gable or a shut type?
It should look like what was previously on the front.
So, that is the.
Steve.
I'm, I'm, so it should, all right, a little shed.
That's a suggestion. If you can see it, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
I just like this.
Yeah.
I also had a question on the left side elevation, the four windows.
The lefts.
Why, why they're not matched to what are on the right side elevation?
Oh, I see.
Then that one's going to be absolutely visible. These windows are here on the left side elevation.
If you look at the existing, if you look at the existing elevation on page four, the left side elevation, there is already a window. They have the same size and proportion.
Yeah, but then to continue it all the way down, it looks, it doesn't look the same as.
Is that the same space? Is that the same room?
It's a new, it's part of the addition. So, would you go down to one, do you think would look better, centered between those two?
No, I'm saying that each one of these windows, one, two, three, four are all identical.
Oh, you just want to see.
They should be more of, my question is, why aren't they?
More like a double hung instead of a transom?
Yeah.
Right. I could, well.
The transoms are up high for some reason.
Probably maybe for, just to keep them out of the way if they put shelving inside, I would think.
Even in that room right here?
That's the garage.
The whole side of the house is garage, one, two, three, four.
The, the windows to the far right is.
Is already there.
Is in the foyer. It's existing and it's at the bottom of the stairs near the foyer.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to make it look a little bit more aesthetically pleasing and historically accurate than to have three identical windows going past.
There's no reason why we can't make it a double hung.
Okay. That was a suggestion. When I first saw it, I thought this may be the back of the house.
So, are you saying?
Just for what everyone would be looking at from the view shed.
Are you?
Windows are really small.
So, I think, but one, one exactly that size exists. Are you suggesting that that one needs to be changed in order?
No, that one's there. I'm just making a design suggestion on the sightliness of this left side elevation, that these three windows at the fourth, excuse me, I know that the one right here is already there.
So, did the client ask for, or is that just a?
I don't really think that they care one way or another.
That's a reason for, you know, going high.
Right, but we could keep it like it, so it's three feet, so you can at least have the counter height shelves and put shelves between the windows.
But the windows on the second floor, the proposed new windows on the second floor are very tall in comparison to a three-foot window. And traditionally, first floor windows are, are, traditionally, windows are, are typically the same width, and first floor windows are longer, and second floor windows are shorter.
Right. So, this is not very sightly towards what you just said, as far as accuracy goes.
No, I agree, but if, if the windows that you're suggesting need to be replaced with a double hung, if it's not taller than the second floor windows, it's going to look very odd. More, in my opinion, more odd than this.
I agree. I agree. Yeah. I disagree with that. Especially to have four of them across the row. So, six over six, six over.
You're six over six, but do you happen to know the dimension offhand, the height of these windows on the second floor? It could be in the master bedroom.
Thirty-six, oh, the height off of the floor.
The height of the window, not the height off of the floor. Is it, is it a?
They're, they're sixty inch tall by thirty-six inch wide.
Well, those are, those are new windows and they're all so.
I think they were.
Larger than, than any of the existing windows on the house. To me, that seems, they seem too tall in general.
All these here, well, we have to meet egress for the bedroom.
Got it. I'm, I'm sorry, are these, are you, are we expecting to vote on this? I don't see anything on the drawings indicating window dimensions or materials or.
I have a lot of material questions.
Or dimensions on overhang or any of that sort of thing.
And the material of the chimney in the rear too.
That was just, we were going to use like a cultured stone, or what would be more?
No, I was, um, we like to like.
You want to see.
See what kind of.
Do you want to lose?
Yeah.
There's, there's a, was a description of everything that you, that needs to be on the drawings in the application form itself. Although.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't know how I feel about.
It's not appeared at the full, at the full application.
Yeah.
Floor is, is here. So, typically, I, here's, here's an example. Here's an example of the form, this is for a different application, but all those items that are listed on the application form should be shown on the drawing.
Right.
Because otherwise, we, we have no.
No idea exactly.
We have no documentation of what's in there.
Most likely, other than, I mean, everything is to match existing, other than the only new element would be this stone.
So, so there were windows?
Oh, you prefer brick?
I've been for the age of the house, likely, yeah. I mean, probably the most abundant chimney material.
Okay.
But also the listing of the windows and the material.
The window sizes and.
Garage door material.
But.
I'd like to make one design comment if I could. Field guide to American houses, very common resource material for architects and, and preservation boards such as this. This is, we were, as we discussed at our last meeting, this is a colonial revival house. So, in this first part of the book, there's a little cheat sheet guide on, if you see this, then look first at this architectural style for colonial revival. I'm getting to the brackets on the porch.
The front porch.
On the front porch. There's brackets on the front porch. Colonial revival style does typically not have brackets on the porch. I understand that they're there for visual interest, and I appreciate that, but a more appropriate treatment on a colonial revival house would be a more elaborate cap on the columns. So, in addition to that, I went to the colonial revival style. Photographs in here, not a single bracket to be seen on, and in fact.
On porches.
Few porches, few porches, certainly a few, full porches, but. You can, you can see, it doesn't have to be elaborate, but.
Yeah, this is scalloped as well, which is a little odd.
That's existing.
Oh, oh, existing left, oh.
You need to be on page two. So.
Oh, yeah. It's a small one there.
It's my personal opinion that the brackets of any size on this style are inappropriate and that a layered, if you will, you know, multiple pieces of profiled trim, you know, sized up and down, you know, small around, around the column, going up inside, it goes out. The base, if you want to dress up the porch, the base could be embellished as well.
Okay.
Yeah, there are brackets on each pillar here as opposed to.
Virginia, while we're on the proposed front elevation, I have a, a design, it's kind of something missing above the garage. Is there supposed to be some sort of matching overhang on the porch to what's above the garage, and I'll overput an addition above it, and there's not a roof line right there? Is there something missing there? Or is it just a?
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, nice suggestions.
I don't think it needs to be.
Okay.
Oh, the other thing I was, the other thing I thought about, the front elevation of the shutters, the shutters need to be correctly mounted.
Is there supposed to be like?
Like shutter dogs?
No, not shutter dogs, but these are shown mounted outside.
I know what you mean.
Beyond the casing.
Yeah.
They need to. Now, even though, and these.
They should, there is, in the design guidelines, available online, there's an excellent description of appropriate sizes and appropriate mounting for shutters. Okay. And I would ask you to abide by.
Yeah, you really can't see that here.
Right.
Abide by the guidelines.
Okay.
Also the lines.
There are the guidelines.
We'd want to see what specific types we're doing in this job as well.
Yes, lighting needs to show. That should be called, that should.
The nitty gritty of all the proposed materials you need to come back to us with.
Sure.
You know, the red ones on the stairs, the, it looks like casing windows on the basement, the door.
Those are probably all.
If you need to replace. Tailor detail too.
Yeah, like the specific.
Okay.
What's going to be used.
And I think that and the list of all the materials is going to get you.
Sure.
It'll be a nice addition for you. I can understand why anymore.
Yes.
So, I think you were, we're not really ready to go ahead, I don't think.
Yeah, we'd make.
Would you like us to table?
To what? I'm sorry.
A different, would you like us to table to another meeting, or do you want to vote on this as is? I think.
We feel like this is an incomplete application.
Yeah, really, yes.
Don't we have to take some kind of action, either table it or?
So, if we.
Yeah, we do.
If we table it, then.
You can come back. If we vote no, you would have to submit a new application.
Oh, yeah, let's table it.
Hey, all right.
Definitely.
Yeah, it's very close.
So, then when I make the changes, what do I do? I don't know the next step.
Come right in, and you'd be ready to go.
I could just come in with it.
Come back.
Just we submit.
That's all.
Just submit for the next month's meeting?
Yes. But just look at the, look at the application form, what you need to show, it's also called out in the, well, it's in the ordinance. If you read the ordinance, you can see that.
Just, this is super minor, but I can't help but notice this is like shaded darker than it was previously. Is there any reason for that? Was it a difference in an actual material way, or?
Some of the else printed it. And you don't have the right line weight.
Just the, like, on the, yeah, the vent.
It's auto, it's auto kit printing and what layered sun and gangwayed.
So, I'll make a motion to table it. Second a motion. Okay.
Member Searle.
Aye.
Member Dubraski.
Aye.
Member Olson.
Yes.
Chair Pollock.
Aye.
Roche Tattersall.
Okay.
So, June 12th is the next meeting.
June 12th.
Thank you.
And I was prepared to.
Good night.
Thank you.
You too.
I have.
Now twenty-five Monroe Avenue. All right.
Didn't come to the packet when she mailed it on.
Porch.
Emailed it? Yeah.
Apologize for my appearance. We all.
I got a claim on.
Rochester from Syracuse and I.
Buffalo-born too.
Well, yeah, yeah. Cover the whole. No, she moved into a place in Rochester. I came right from there, so I don't even have my material with me, but.
We don't have a dress code for applicants.
Good, good. Fortunately.
What do we?
So, his application also had the separate.
Yes.
staple document. Yes, out of her application.
Yes.
Yep.
I put it up here.
And you answered a lot of questions by same roof line, wooden windows.
Yes, I did. You guys looked at this as a kind of an informational meeting before.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed conceptually, and then I went full with some architectural drawings and some details, yeah.
I'm sorry, but I didn't catch it. Are you the owner?
Yes. Yes, I am. Nice to meet you.
Yep, nice to meet you.
So, I couldn't, I couldn't help but notice that on the proposed, we're looking at like four over one windows here, but it doesn't appear any of your others are. Is that, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to look at the front of the house, though. Is that, is it?
The, the four.
Single pane, you know, just kind of like on this picture, oh, gosh.
I've got it here.
Yeah.
Images like that.
So, I'm sorry, when you say the four over one.
As you see right there, the four panes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It, it actually matches what's on the garage right now, which is just a look that I liked. So, I didn't, I didn't want to deviate significantly from what, what is on the house right now, but I don't have pictures of the garage, but that's what's on the garage right now. I also.
The garage only?
Just the garage, yeah. I also thought it did help to differentiate it from the house. This is not an addition to the house, it's a screened-in porch. And I am reading some of the materials from you folks, and maybe not everything, but I thought I had read where there was a desire to differentiate in some way, an addition like this, and I thought it matched well with the garage, but also helped to differentiate it from the house. And frankly, it is a look that I like, so.
You notice you've got a list of materials here.
I did, yeah.
I had a question on the overhang, the gable overhang.
Yes.
They, on one side is lower than the other.
That's correct, yes.
Is there anywhere we've, or can you explain that?
There's a reason. If you look at the, I'm sorry, the, what's the, the?
Elevation?
The elevation, sorry, yeah, if you look at the elevation, which you have, you will see, I'm sorry, I'm referring to this as the elevation.
Okay.
You'll see this is the existing house.
Yeah.
And this is the existing porch. For some reason, when that pad was added, they extended the pad here about a foot or so.
Yeah.
So you're right, if you look closely, you can see that the one end, the overhang is longer to cover that extension of about a foot. It's the funniest thing, if you guys have any idea, there is a little door right here. I don't even know.
Milk door.
It's a full-length door.
A full-length door.
Full length, and it, I don't, I don't feel like I'm that big a guy, but I would have a hard time squeezing through there. I have no idea why it's there. It'll be gone, of course. It's this little, little door. So anyway, this extends about a foot, and that's the reason for the extension on that one side.
Monsters used to do that so if you couldn't fit into the meal hall, you didn't get eaten.
Sure.
Maybe a question that would reveal the answer in a meaningful way for you.
Yeah.
These two peaks are one above the other.
Yes, yes.
The new peak here will be in line with these.
That's correct.
So that's why one bead is lower than the other.
Yeah.
And then my last question was, do you have a specific manufacturer and part number of the windows?
I don't, because I haven't selected a manufacturer of them yet, okay? I just know what sizes are going to work for me. I'm working with my contractor. I did have a discussion with this board about the windows previously. I wanted to replace some of my windows, you know, with.
Wooden windows.
Windows, and I understand unless they're irreparable, I can't do that, so I have some idea what the requirements are, but I didn't, I haven't sourced the specific window yet. I just wanted to assure the board that it will be a wooden window, you know, in line with what exists on the house right now.
So are we going to see that before we approve this?
Yeah.
Seventy-five North Main again.
Seventy-four, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's what we expect to see.
It says this, but the list.
Right.
Yeah.
We got into a bit of a situation with a different one, where somebody was like, yes, that's what we're assuring you that we're going to get, and then they didn't get it, and we were kind of in a bind.
Well, why were you in a bind, though? You, they assured you.
No, they were in a bind.
They were.
He's in a bind.
We're not in a bind.
We're not. But if you, if you want to put me in a bind like that, I am happy to accept it, because I can assure you, these will be, you know, top-of-the-line wooden windows.
We can, we can give you source names for custom-made wooden windows if you need it?
I will be going, well, I typically, I'm getting all my materials through a place called HEP, which is down near. Yeah, yeah, I have a family connection with them. The owner is my daughter's uncle-in-law, whatever you want to call it, so I typically source from them. But what I, what I guess I'm trying to avoid is another month's delay, you know, on a nice summer screened-in porch as it gets warm. So I would be happy to bring you specifics on the window. I'm meeting with the contractor tomorrow. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to do that before the next meeting.
I'm okay to approve. I'm just, I know Steve is going to stop your construction if you order the wrong thing.
You don't have the sizes of the windows shown on the drawings?
That I can give you. The drawings are to scale, so I, but I can, I can actually put the, you know, the actual dimensions on the drawing.
Well, we've been pretty sticky about what's on the application tonight and what isn't on the application tonight. Just because you have a lovely picture and you say it's going to, it's going to match in order to be, in order to not be arbitrary and capricious.
Equitable, yeah.
I could certainly do anything special.
I mean, if they're dimensioned and.
I can write them on there. I mean, the drawing is to scale, so the dimensions are essential there. I just did not write them down, but I can do that.
Well, we want to know the dimensions of the window and the divided light and all those sorts of things.
Yep, no, I can certainly do that, as you said.
You're trying to save time, though.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand.
I appreciate sitting on a screened porch. I do it every day.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of sold before November.
So the, so the dimensions are, really, there was a door here listed, there is the windows that are listed, and I don't know, maybe there's a window on this end piece.
Right.
Information on that.
Right.
We need, and the other windows and that.
Sure, okay.
Is that something you could provide us in the time that it takes us to meet with somebody else?
Tonight, no, because you want to know the, the actual manufacturer of the window, and that's going to, you know, to give you exact dimensions, I'm going to have to talk to the manufacturer of the window. You know, I was just going to adjust those close by whatever, quarter inch, three quarters of an inch, you know, to accommodate whatever windows they could provide.
I mean, you're not going to sneak another one in. We're still looking at four and four.
Yep. Well, I'm meeting with the contractor tomorrow, so I, then I'll talk to HEP, find out what the availability is. A lot of times, these windows come in, you know, various increments, so we'll find out what that, what that is. I went through this with the storm windows, the light that.
They all have set dimensions for their jigs and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
They all know what it is, and they can tell you with an easy phone call, but.
Okay.
I don't think they pick up the phone right now.
No, no, but it would, it'd certainly be, I'm certainly going to need a couple of days. What's today, Monday? Yeah.
Can you, would it help you at all saying the board, we approved everything, both the window and door dimensions, is there enough there?
I feel like there's not much change dramatically for me.
Yeah, right.
So that you could get started on this thing, and then when you got your information about the doors.
That would be, that would be really helpful. Yeah, thank you.
You will call and see if there's an opportunity for a meeting depending on the time.
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, do you think that if you got started, that, I mean, is there a rush for a special meeting, or is that something we can check off on the next month of the meeting if you want to get started?
What I would like to do is talk to the contractor. My guess is, as long as it's, if everybody's comfortable that we're going to have a, you know, a high-quality wooden window, which I just wouldn't put in anything but that, and you just require the dimensions, then I feel like we could, you know, we could get started. And then I could bring in those dimensions and the manufacturer, and we could get that final approval. That would be really helpful, yeah.
Don't accidentally buy aluminum clad.
Yeah, don't, no.
Please don't do that. Especially for custom.
No, be in a bind, I know.
I would also ask that you give a dimension for the size of the mullion.
Yeah.
In between the windows.
Yeah, and that'll, that'll come out of, it's kind of a combination of what's the window then, what's?
No, I totally get it. You've got, you've got a space to fill.
Yeah.
The windows are a specific width, and the remainder is divided by, well, the outsides are, appear to be somewhat larger, as they should be, but the mullions in between, the structural mullions in between the separate windows.
Let me just ask now, the drawings are, you know, dimensionally correct right now, but they may change slightly depending on what windows I source. Can I avoid just going through another set of architectural drawings and just provide the dimensions, even though they may not match exactly what's on the architectural drawings? You know, it might be up by an inch, half an inch or something. Okay, that'd be great.
I'm okay with that. I can speak.
So it's 13 of these style windows, one door, and then this window up top?
Yes, and I will come back with dimensions on doors, windows, mullions between. Yeah, basically, I'll try to dimension out everything I can on that one set of drawings.
Good. Do we have a motion?
I will motion to approve, I'm sorry, Jeff.
But otherwise, everything is going to be built as indicated in the sample.
Yes, there'll be no change in the number of windows, no, the positioning of the door, no, I'm set on all of that.
So I motion to approve the application as is contingent upon the additional information regarding the sizing of the not-yet-sourced windows.
Right, and the.
And the manufacturer.
Yeah, manufacturer, materials, sizing of doors and windows, and mullions in between, however you want to capture all that, yeah, okay?
So of course, your motion would also include the mullions.
Dimensions.
It seems like there was something else.
The.
Material makeup.
Material makeup, the door.
Yeah.
Manufacturer, and sizing.
I'll second that motion.
How do you spell mullion? M-U-L-L-I-O-N.
You don't use that word daily?
Some of us do.
Okay, Member Thurl.
Yes.
Member Olson.
Yes.
Member Dubraski.
Aye.
Chair Pollak.
Yes.
Great, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, and I don't want to ask for anything special.
Time with Steve, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'll plan to be on the next agenda with all that information, okay?
Excellent.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Do you have findings of fact?
The findings of fact are that it is consistent with the historical nature of the resource and improves the usability of the resource. I don't know.
According to the village guideline.
And consistent in our village design.
That guidelines, yeah.
In addition, with the application.
Thank you.
Okay. Forty-four ran.
Is this, is this from, is this from the curb?
Yeah. I figured they could have a deal from the road.
So you're getting rid of vinyl railings and putting in?
Kind of hoping you like that.
And so conflicted?
I should probably give you the whole genesis of this thing. It started 2017 about the house after it had been abandoned for two years. The, the house is on a driveway that's owned by one of the four homes and used by the other three homeowners, incident to a driveway or an easement. Preceded, a prior building inspector determined at the first hearing that the property was generally, what is it, whatever the catch-all provision is, generally accessible to the, available or accessible to the general public, about which I strenuously objected, and it was eventually sorted out in my favor. And now we have actually an agreement with the village. So the only part of the home that was determined to be visible from the street was the west side, the side that faces out to the street, not front of the house where the driveway runs along, and also at that time, not the backyard. What's changed, and so I did vinyl because my next-door neighbor had vinyl. I've come to rule that decision. It's, the mass is wrong, the color is wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong.
Brittle in the winter. Brittle in the winter.
Not out there in the winter time, but I'll take your word for it. The reason I'm here, instead of just assuming I could make whatever changes I wanted, because it's not visible, is because there have been, I think, 11 ash trees along the creek bed that have been removed.
Oh, my, that's because of the Emerald Ash, or?
One of, one in the village right of way, was done by the village. Four large ones by me, five, three or four by the neighbor, so that's why this is now visible, and that's why.
It's becoming visible.
It has become visible. It'll disappear, it can, but it's at least visible.
So you want to go to wrought iron?
Aluminum.
Aluminum, okay.
I don't want to do wrought iron.
Yeah, yeah.
I want as little mass as is possible.
Well, it's a, it's a relatively modern house, and wrought iron is, is again.
Nineteen sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight is the house.
Oh, you know, I thought this was the house that.
This was the Nookins Homes.
Yeah, I thought it was the house that, because I had looked at the blue sheet, this is the blue sheet, I had looked at the blue sheet. I thought this was a house that Wilbur Shield built. He was a big contractor back in the day.
Might have been.
Yeah, but he was, that house was built before nineteen sixty-eight, Wilbur Shield's house.
Yeah, so maybe the next one back.
Forty-three, eight, something like that.
Yeah.
Forty-six.
I'm mistaken about previous ownership.
So the style is, I mean, it has white trim, and you have white vent or white.
That was also one of the interesting fights way back when. You're all architects, I take it?
No.
No, it's the only pure of here.
So that was a difficult point of contention as well. At one point, well, when the village thought that they could, ahead jurisdiction of the front of the house because they called the driveway open to the general public, the Architectural Review Board said it was a classic nineteen sixty-eight ranch. I had done my homework before then, and I, I thought that it only met three of the seven qualifications. I talked to the then mayor as I left the building that night, full of frustration, and he asked what happened. I told him that I discovered I had a classic ranch. He said, your ranch is French provincial, or, he said, your house is French provincial.
He'd know.
Well, the point is, I think, and I, so I took it by myself to find out how the house was designed, and it turns out that, oh my God, what's the owner's name?
Frank Castor.
Newcomb, the owner, the former owner.
Mike Newcomb?
Yeah, Mike, it turns out that Mike Newcomb said at lunch with his friend, who was a builder, and they drew it on a napkin, and I found out from Mike's.
So why do you want to change the, why do you want to change the vent or the bray?
Too much mass, and I think it's too bright, but it's not a big thing for me. We, we would prefer something as much more discreet, but if you guys want it to stay in vinyl.
That's why I'm conflicted.
I don't have a.
Well, I don't want it to stay vinyl, but I don't want to set a standard of approving aluminum.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. And I understand that.
I did, did, wasn't an aluminum railing system approved on Elm, not very long ago?
Courtney.
No, I'm talking about the.
She's talking about the porch on it, if you can, visible from the side.
You just approved one in Courtney, too.
Courtney was a small railing though, it was very small.
Pardon?
Courtney was a small railing.
This is, this is not, I've no.
No, I know we just approved aluminum. I know we did.
Yeah, I know we did, too.
I can't speak for them, I did not.
On Elmwood.
Go back there on Courtney, right, twenty-seven.
That's right.
Yeah, and the deck that I took such exception to the drawings about.
Yep, that was on Elm Brook, it's visible from south.
Yes, and I, and I believe that his, I believe aluminum was approved there.
I thought they went to wood.
I think they may, I don't know.
You're talking about a fifteen Elm Brook?
Yeah.
That's wood.
Yeah, we made them change it.
Okay.
Right on the corner?
Pardon?
Right on the corner, the yellow house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven Courtney is aluminum.
Aluminum is certainly a material used in fencing in nineteen sixty-eight.
This is like a.
I have to say, it wasn't widely used in nineteen sixty-eight in any capacity and not.
They both were this finish and again barely. I, uh, for, if if I were let me start again.
If it is the position of the board that it would be better to have aluminum than vinyl, then certainly if it's an improvement to the resource, your findings could be crafted in such a way that that would would not be precedential for some other situation. I mean, you've got a nineteen sixty-eight house. You've got a vinyl railing, which may not be all that appetizing.
Yeah.
And you're you are approving material that was available in nineteen sixty-eight. And you're, and it's an, I would say, if that's all true, then it's an improvement to the resource.
I would just say that I would prefer to leave out the fact that it was available then because it was not widely used in the capacity at that time.
That's fine.
In that use.
Okay, any other comments? Dan?
Yeah.
Nope. We have a motion to approve this application.
I'll move to approve the application as presented.
Second.
I'll say no.
Okay, so member Dubrovsky?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Cyril?
Yes.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Findings of fact.
Finding of facts.
With a limited viewpoint from the public accessible aspect, that it is an improvement upon the existing material and proves the resource closer to as it would be historically, and it is removable.
And it's in nineteen sixty-eight, housing is below nineteen sixty-eight.
Good, we good?
Good, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, we have time to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Also, there are two sets that we cannot approve because Kendra and Mr. McRyer are here.
All right, what about, let's go through by day by day, can we?
Well, some of, some of these are for, uh.
Correct, we'll go day by day.
Seventy-five Monroe that I.
Two of them, yes, and we're not going to.
So.
Because I would need it.
Oh, good, because I.
So can we do the February twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
There's just one issue here. If if you never have a quorum of people to approve the minutes who were here at the meeting, they become the secretary's minutes, which is perfectly acceptable.
Okay.
Oh, well, yeah, Kendra wasn't available, Kendra was at twenty.
February twenty-seventh, the reason that we never approved these is because there is an error with my votes, which is fixed, so. I don't have any issues with the Monday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting anymore.
We have a floor here.
Uh, we have Jeff, Virginia, Chris and Dan.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
Okay, so good, sorry. Okay, so member Dubrovsky?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Cyril?
Yes.
Chair Pollak?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right, so then we had the next one, which is March sixth. And at, with three or four, we have Jeff, Virginia was absent.
I will say absent.
Kendra was Zoom, she's absent today, and then we have Chris and Dan. So we only have three, is that enough or not?
That's a good one.
No, okay.
Yep.
So I reviewed these and I didn't find any issues. So I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
Second.
Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, Dubrovsky?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Chair Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm sorry to say a member before your last names.
It's fine.
Okay, so then the next one, we have March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Jeff Pollak was absent, Virginia, Kendra, Christopher was absent and Daniel was there, so we have, we can't do this one.
No.
So that's Monday, March twentieth, which was we'll wait to approve that. The next one in our list is a special meeting for Monday, March twenty-seventh.
Seventy-five.
It's the seventy-five.
Seventy-five, I can't do it.
So we cannot do it?
No.
Okay.
And the next one we can't do.
April, Monday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. I was absent. Chris was absent. Only Jeff and Virginia are here.
Yeah.
So we can't do that.
Can't do the last one.
All right, and then the last one for the record is Monday, April twenty-fourth. Uh, this is seventy-five Monroe meeting with Jeff and I are here. So we can't do that. So let me ask you a question on the two seventy-five Monroe's, because that's two of the four that are still left. How are we going to approve those? Will be another seventy-five Monroe meeting for us?
I think that's a little early.
You have to build here.
Okay.
There's an alter in another meeting, yeah.
Then it'll be free.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if he is via Zoom and there's only three of them, is that okay?
No, I think it's, I think there's three here.
Okay, so Kendra would also have to be here.
Right.
Yeah, somebody.
So there might not be a way to. Oh, you have to make a motion to close.
Make a motion to close?
I'm not, I I have something to say.
And I have to go, so.
Okay, that's fine, you have to go, that's fine.
Yeah, Jeff said.
I just want to, regarding metal roofs, we have an open metal roof application right now on Washington Road, Washington Avenue. The metal roof that was put on when the homeowner had a crisis at her house, the contractor. Were you, were you two on the board at that time?
No.
Okay.
I think I know which house you're talking about, it's past Lincoln on the right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Lincoln on the right, the uh well, just nail it, I'm just gonna, I'm I'm just putting it out there. That's a a modern metal roofing that was installed without approval and it needs to be dealt with.
Has that house been sold?
No, it was, it was bought, the woman, it was a young single woman, when she bought the house, the roof was leaking tremendously, she was uh in need of an immediate solution to water pouring into her house.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, the the shaped metal roofing is is less expensive than asphalt shingles, which were on the house. And uh, her contractor said that he would get all the approvals. He went to town hall and said, oh, we don't have anything to do with roofing, you know, just do whatever you want. So she ended up in a pickle and she can't she was sold the house, do you remember this, Jeff? She was, she was there were are some issues, there were some issues around, uh, I would say, the inspection and and uh, her legal counsel, Jeff suggested that her her legal counsel, when she bought the house, was questionable and.
No, I said she should call.
Oh, she should call. Well, in any case, all I'm saying is there's a, for you two who weren't on the board, there's a shaped metal roofing, uh, unapproved, open application out there that you all have to deal with.
Yeah.
While I'm not here.
Yeah, I'm I'm pretty, I I I would love to go to a village board meeting and kind of create some kind of process where you could expedite the covenants, because honestly, I'd rather stick to the code. And if they wanted to set some kind of timeframe that's standardized for people that went outside of that, that's something for them to approve, but I don't want to stick outside of that.
Um yeah, we can't, that that's not possible because then the it's just too, it's, it would not be an appropriate situation to build that in.
Yeah. I just, I can't, I can't approve those, I just, I don't know.
And the difference, the difference on Washington, there are a couple of differences on Washington, in fact, it's a standing seam roof versus the pan roof, which is on Courtney, which is definitely modern material. The one on Washington looks period relevant.
It's, it's the same pan.
Well, the difference is over, you've got a house on Rand that was approved by a board with the same roof, just a different color. So that's, that's my only thing, because you can, I can show houses in the nineteen hundreds all on Main Street that had standing seam roofs.
But they were, as I was mentioning earlier, there's, there's a significant visual difference between either copper or turn metal, standing seam roofs. And I, if you need to, if you need to see it, I can get samples of both types of roofing, small size samples, so that you.
No, I agree, I just want to know what, if there are metal roofs to be approved, what material and what guidelines are we looking at versus what is on Courtney that is inappropriate? Because I do agree.
Well, I I believe there may be, there may be some language in in the guidelines. If there's not, there go to the National Park Service website and look at the preservation brief on metal roofing and historic roofing materials. The the National Park Service website has lots and lots and lots of easily accessible information. And the National Park Service is the Secretary of the Interior, who is the highest.
Furthermore, am I, am I held hostage to vote in a way that is consistent with somebody's determination from previous board?
No, we're not.
So that's, I guess, I, well, yeah, that's where I I feel like, you know, it's it's kind of difficult.
Let's talk about that for a minute. The answer, the easy legal answer is, no, you're not. But you have to think practically about what's going to happen if they take an article seventy-eight from your decision. You're going to be looking at a judge, I'm going to be looking at a judge who says, wait a minute, you uh you approve this over here, what's going on here? Whether or not um the situation's changed, the findings then were wrong, it's still something we're going to have to navigate. So you don't want to walk lively by a precedent. But um you're going to have to figure out what the right answer is and then build your findings around that right answer, and you're going to have to deal why, deal with why it's not the same as that previous decision.
The the ordinance has changed, the makeup of the board has changed.
Yeah.
And I reviewed those findings of fact and I am not, I personally am not in agreement with the findings of fact for the wrong place, so Steve can get you those findings and you can go look.
Yeah, I would love to see that.
I would, I would, but you have to build your findings. The fact that the membership has not changed or has changed is not that meaningful because you're supposed to be applying.
An extension of the board. We are.
Applying, applying parameters.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, believe it or not, this board's decisions are looked at, at least for seeker purposes, as non-discretionary. So it's, this is what they want to do, this is our code, we have to marry the two or it's a denial. I mean, that's how it's, that's what it's looking. And in fact, that our code has changed. It's changed, but it hasn't really changed substantially in that, in in what you're looking at.
That's where I have a hard time with deviating from it, right? Like, oh, well, we did, but here's the code, so.
Well, but you got, you've got to build your fi- that's why with this aluminum fence that you just approved, we had to build the findings to deal with your concerns about an appropriate aluminum, inappropriate material. We would stop, but it's a heck of a lot more appropriate than that.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Thank you for pointing that out.
It's all about, it's all about your findings and applying the standards in that code. And and frankly, that metal roof is a bit of a challenge on Washington Ave. But is it really? Because if it is a different application of a metal roof, then you would find, would have found on that roof or on that house. You know, is that maybe the reason to deny it? Uh, so you know, we, I've looked a lot at this issue and I, you know, you're not, I don't think readily av- I don't think there was readily available a situation like this. Where you got a nineteen twenty house and a modern standing seam roof. I don't know.
Steve, to your point.
I think it's very hard.
What I, what I think of is the fact that like there are counterfeits of Egyptian stuff that are still like eight hundred years old. You know what I mean? So because of the fact that it existed doesn't necessarily still mean that it was appropriate upon construction. So, yeah, I mean, I, that, that's where I'm curious about the Rand findings of facts, is that not necessarily is there a precedent that is from a hundred years ago that that existed, but was it appropriate for that house?
Well, that's the whole thing too, is you're looking at anything, could it have been relevant at the time of construction?
Yeah.
Well.
Not, not, not modern steel roofing.
Right, right.
I would, I would, I would say the the better, the more accurate question is is it appropriate for the resource?
Yes.
Is that proposal appropriate for the resource?
And then it'll go down the guy, the the process that needs, that's on deck next month.
You've been doing a lot of time though, you're allowing, you know, we change, you allow asphalt roofing, you allow, you allow the department signing. It's all adjourned on meeting, except for.